Good evening, everybody. We will go through this as quickly as possible given the weather situations and stuff outside. Appreciate everybody coming in this evening for our February Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, I'll lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Covert will read us in the invocation.
Father, thank you for this time together. Thank you that we are able to hear the news of the city, Lord. We ask that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions tonight that affect the city. We ask for your blessing on our staff, on our mayor and his staff, Lord, and our police and fire departments, Lord. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Again, thank you for joining us for our February 6, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Compton.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Mueller.
Parker.
Here.
Parsley.
Here.
Panado.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Tyler.
Here. Any questions in the minutes for January?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so last month, we actually, Brian and myself, actually got reappointed as far as our positions. I know that we elected on, we had gone through the election of officers, but we kind of need to do that again, the fact that the two of us had to get reappointed in that whole piece of that.
Usually we do it in February because everybody's terms are through the end of January, and that way we know who else is going to be reappointed if we do it in February. Y'all caught me by surprise, but it didn't hurt anything. It worked. We just need to reaffirm it today.
And so the positions is Kevin Parsley remaining as chairman, and we have, as far as Brian Powell, as far as vice chairman, and then secretary is Vivy Haney. Is that correct? Okay. So this be a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Covert. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Panado.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
That passes eight zero. And one thing I forgot to bring up in here, we have two tabled items on the agenda this evening. Actually, one tabled item, I'm sorry. Under the rezoning are 18-05 Charles and Maria Campbell, 9369 Marchant Road from A1 to C2. That's been tabled per staff till the March Planning Commission meeting, so we will not hear that this evening. So I just wanted to bring that up in case there was anyone here for that particular issue. The other thing I will call out is that, just a reminder to everyone, next week is special election for the bond. I just wanted to make sure I call that out to everyone, and make sure you spend some time reading up on that, but we do have that coming up next week, on Tuesday, I believe. Correct?
Early voting starts today.
Early voting starts today. Thank you.
Only at Washington County. Only at the counties, you can't, there's not any place in town that you can early vote. You have to go to the county.
No. All the information is on the city's website and on the different counties' websites.
Okay. So our next section on here, public hearing, we have a proposed amendment to Chapter 130, Article 12, Ballpark Area, Southwest District, Overlay Section 3.8, C1, adding monument, adding monument sign three, presented by Patsy Christie.
Working with development as it's occurring in the overlay district, we have determined that we need one more sign location, or one more type of sign, which would be a monument type three, and it would only allow for a single tenant. What it does is it gives them a larger display area to put their information on there. If you remember, we have specific signs, has to have that curve, has to have stone, has to be pretty much this design, and the other two monument signs allows for smaller panels, and they can be multi-tenant, but this would be a single tenant only that could be used at this. It can go on any of the street locations. They have to be 150 feet apart, similar to all the rest of the monument signs, but it does afford one single tenant to be able to have a sign.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Remember the sign ordinance, that portion, there are no variances. That's why we have to come in and add another sign, because we couldn't give a variance to allow it to have a different kind.
It's to the commission.
This forward to council? This is forward to council with a recommendation for approval. I'll make a motion to forward to council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Next item, proposed change in master's trail plan, mountain bike trails on Fitzgerald Mountain and Bayori Park, presented by Patsy Christie.
You may have seen, the Water and Sewer Commission has made available the property behind the water storage tanks on Fitzgerald Mountain, available for the development of mountain bike trails. And those are being developed by the Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers with funding, grant funding that they have secured. It also ties into Bayori Park, and they will be doing some intermediate and beginner trails in that location, too. In order to make this move on as it should, we need to add that to the master's street plan, so you'll see that area, there's a, can you, yeah, there we go. That area right in there is where the amendment is to add those mountain bike trails that are being put in, and the mountain bike trails being put into Bayori Park with the connection out to O.R. Road. They have also purchased the Fitzgerald Station property to develop a trailhead at that location. The Water and Sewer Commission will maintain ownership of that. The rest of it is anticipated that will be given to the city once the mountain bike trails have been completed and all the work is done. So we need to amend our master's street plan to put that, I mean, our master trail plan to put that information on there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Also, to council? Correct. Okay. I'll make a motion to forward to council for approval with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. All right. First tabled item, W. 18-05 Charlie Adams, 910 Crutcher, waiver sidewalk requirements, presented by Charlie Adams. If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Charlie Adams, and I reside at 3885 Julio Road in Springdale. We are building a duplex at 910 Crutcher Street. We raised an old house and replaced it with a new structure, and we cannot put the sidewalk in there as the requirements are right now, because there's a ditch that runs in front of the street. There are no sidewalks running down Crutcher Street. I do have some pictures, if you'd like to see some closer up pictures than what we have right there. I would normally have to put about, it's a 19 feet of sidewalk on each side of this driveway.
Have you discussed with engineering how the drainage could be taken care of and allow the sidewalk to go in?
No, ma'am, I have not. My contractor was building the duplex, and I just talked to the inspection department, and that's the reason I'm here.
Could the sidewalk be moved back and put just at the edge of where the ditch is now, at that location?
Yes, ma'am, it could. My only thing is if we ever do curbing-guttering on that street, that sidewalk would go right there where it's at right now. The five-foot comes right at the edge where it should be from my point. It's just the edge would be halfway over the ditch. So if the city ever did go back and curb and gutter it, then I could put a sidewalk in there with no problem.
Would you be willing to make a payment in lieu of improvement so when and if the city does that improvement, you would, that portion of your money would be used to do the sidewalk in that location?
Sure. We'd love to have sidewalks there.
Would you do a payment in lieu of improvements, in lieu of doing the sidewalk itself?
Yes.
Okay. No, I don't recommend waiver of sidewalks. I'm trying to work away to the sidewalk there.
No, it's fine. I assume that's all your comments on that.
That's all my comments, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any questions or comments from the audience?
So you would be willing to ask for a waiver of the sidewalk requirements with a payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. It's to the commission. Any questions?
I'll make a motion with the agreement of payment in lieu of, on the sidewalk.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Seven yes, one recuse. The waiver and payment in lieu of passes seven and one recuse.
If you'll come by the office, we'll work out the.
Yes, I'll be by tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next section, public hearing on rezoning. First item are 18-03 Pinnacle Car Services Incorporated, 2944 North 48th Street, from A1 to C1, presented by Steve Zega.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. On behalf of my client, Pinnacle Services, Car Services Incorporated, would request this to be tabled until April. In speaking to Ms. Christie, she informed me that the only way to get that done was to appear here tonight, make the request personally, and then open the floor for comments on that request, or anybody who is here to comment in general on the proposal.
Okay. Patsy, any comments from?
That is correct. That's what we have to do. We can table them one month, that's the way we've been doing those, it automatically goes to the next meeting. To get a two-month extension for the, we have to hear it tonight, and then everybody knows it's coming back in two months.
Okay. Any questions?
If you agree to table it till April.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Jim Reed, Springdale City Council. Only thing I've got to say is, the agendas that were passed out tonight show that tabled, okay?
Yeah.
And so there's a gentleman that might have had something to say about it, but it showed tabled, so I told him it was tabled.
Well, we had a little bit of misunderstanding when he wanted to.
And so therefore, he may not get a chance to talk tonight, and that's not right.
Do you know if he's an adjacent property owner?
I do not, no.
Well, let it be known that it's going to be tabled to the April meeting and.
Thank you, Jim. It's to the commission. So this would be a call for the vote to allow it to be tabled until the April.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Mr. Chairman, members, thank you. I'll see you in two months.
Thank you. Next item are 18-04 Signature Bank of Arkansas, 7746 West Miller Road, from PUD to SF2, presented by CEI.
I've got the certified mail receipts. Tom Hoppenheim with CEI Engineering. The property is located at the northeast corner of Miller Road and the under-construction US 412. The plan is for residential in this location. Part of the property sometime in the past was zoned as a PUD, a planned unit development, and the developer-owner has asked us to rezone it to match the zoning of the remainder of the property as a residential zoning.
Staff comments?
And it was split off because of the 412 bypass going through and the amount of right-of-way that was purchased through there, correct?
As far as, as what?
The reason we had this little piece of PUD like it is now, it was connected to the property to the south around the school as part of the PUD, but with the 412 bypass going through, it separated this from the other side.
That was my understanding.
Okay. And this property was in a PUD, and then was it gone into bankruptcy, and that's how it comes back to the bank?
Correct.
Yes.
Comprehensive Land Use Plan indicates low density residential use for the area. The resulting request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Any comments or questions from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Gary McConnell. I live in the legendary subdivision on Belgrove Avenue. My question was, it just, is this, I think I understood that they're going to keep the housing requirements as the same as in Legendary, which is really behind the school, the lower part of this. Are they going to be able to build lower-cost housing?
They are building houses in an SF2 zone that requires a 70-foot lot frontage on a public street with 8,000 square feet. The same size lots there are all over town. The type of housing in there is not determined by the zoning classification. We'll get a large-scale or a subdivision plat that shows how they're going to lay that out.
Right. I guess our concern was about the layout of the housing and stuff compared to what we have in Legendary.
Well, they'll have to submit a preliminary plat to show how all that's going to be laid out, how they will access it off of Grimsley Road, how it will, the plan is to attach this to the other piece of property that's already zoned SF2, so you don't have this little corner.
So the rest is already.
The rest is already zoned SF2. All we're really talking about is this little square and that little narrow piece right next to the highway.
Thank you.
Was there another question from the audience? Okay. It's to the commission.
And the only reason they're wanting to do this is because the new Springdale bypass has cut off part of the property.
The property to the south is already PUD, and it has been built out, I don't know that it's completed, but it has a clubhouse, and it has the amenities that went with that pud portion of it. The rest of Legendary subdivision is SF2 as well.
So if you'll notice, you have the corner, squarish shape in the corner, but also you see the strip along 412 on the north side. That essentially delineates the bound going south of what was PUD, and obviously, the 412 bypass cut off that little strip, and then the little bit of the corner there that is also included.
I guess what they need to understand is that's all controlled access back to the end of that highway right-of-way back there, so.
Well, they know that. We've already had that discussion. They can't access until you get past.
Right.
The edge of the bridge, where that line into the top, access can't go until you get to there, because it's all controlled. Yeah.
Okay.
Access to that corner will be through the adjoining property.
Yeah. Internal street layout is what they'll have to do.
So that covers that whole track next to Grimsley Road? Is that all the way, all the way back?
All the rest of that property around it is already zoned SF2.
SF2, okay.
Jim Reed, Springdale City Council, 9460 Oak Drive. I'm kind of close to the neighborhood. I've been contacted a lot this week about this, and I want to make sure these people that are here, and there's a lot of them here, have said everything they want to say about this. I think that I see it a little different because of it being across the bridge, and the fact that all the property behind it there is already SF2. But which, you know, that just makes them able to build a little more, a few more houses closer to that. But I just want to make sure that everybody's, you know, good with that.
Yeah, if you have comments, if you don't mind coming up to the mic and stating your name and address, please.
My name's Adam Grubbs, 7367 Belgrove Avenue in Legendary. I think a lot of us seem kind of confused about the fact that they're saying that part of the Legendary was already zoned as SF2, because we were all under the understanding that ours was a PUD in that area.
Well, there's a portion of it. Aaron, can you go to the zoning map so you can see how all this goes together? Let's just pull it up and let you look at it, because not all of the area out there is in a PUD.
Okay. While we're waiting on that, I think one of the initial concerns with a lot of people in the Legendary community, and I serve with four other people on the advisory committee, we have two representatives that represent us on the board for HOA or POA, but I think the initial concern we had was is that with the change in lot sizes, when you go down from that minimum requirement of a .22, basically a quarter acre down to anything smaller, is that you're going to have more of a congestion on a road that's already kind of a concern out of 112. Initially, also, adding more homes in that area will increase the amount of students also going through that school Shaw. So understanding that, you know, development and growth is going to happen, and we want that, in our community to have that growth, it's a matter and concerns of how the growth is going to happen.
Well, you know, anytime you look at that, see, if you look at this area up here, all the area adjacent to it is already zoned for SF2. The improvements to Grimsley Road will have to be done with the subdivision itself, their half of the road. I think we all recognize that the intersection of 112 is going to have to be addressed by the highway department sometime in the future. I've had more conversations this week with people talking about how far the traffic backs up on both sides trying to get out onto 112. We're going to have to go back to the highway department and ask them to do a study of that location again, just as the development occurs out there.
Widen in the roads, which then affects all the homeowners that are actually, that are situated alongside 112, they're going to lose some of the property.
The highway department has had under-studied the 112 corridor for quite some time, and there's a preliminary report out on it, but we want them to look specifically at that intersection as new development occurs. So you can see the area that we're talking about, the PUD is just that area that's in a different color. The rest of Legendary subdivision is SF2, is what they're looking for on the other side. If you go look up off of Waggonwell Road, that's SF2 as well.
But with talking about the Legendary, you're saying that the portion, where's the boundary where it sits, switches from a PUD to an SF2 southeast of where you're at with the cursor?
Can you make that any bigger?
Because I do see that the SF2 is indicated by yellow, and that the lighter colored area is indicated with a PUD.
Yeah, and the school district is out of the pud itself. The school district has a PUD.
Yeah, that's separate to its own, but.
And that's all that was rezoned to PUD when Legendary came in, the rest of it is zoned SF2.
Did not know that.
It looks like there's some, I'm looking at it online, it looks like Cross Hill Cove and Bridgegate Avenue, that, those are PUD.
Part of them are, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, they're even on a smaller lot size than what would be allowed at this when we rezon this to SF2.
Because that's what you get with a PUD. You are allowed to increase density because you're adding amenities and some of those things to it, too.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm Ronald Wright. My biggest concern here is, I live on Bridston. What are we going to do with the traffic that's already there and about the dump trucks running through there and tearing up these roads? You don't get a kid killed over there, I can tell you that. Come, go through there on a bus, I have. It is hard, and you better watch it all the way, and you're not considering the safety of the kids at this point. You're just considering somebody's wanting to do something.
Well, and you're correct. We have to look at the traffic congestion patterns in those kind of areas as development occurs, but the zoning is all we're talking about now, is whether the best use of that piece of property, that little square and that narrow strip, stays a PUD, which allows for smaller lots than what an SF2 would be, or do we rezon it to SF2 so it has a larger lot? The rest of it has already been rezoned to SF2, and we have to deal with the congestion issues when we get a subdivision plan, and when we start working with.
Well, what gets me, Patsy, certain people can come down here, and y'all will go along with it, and certain people has got it, and at best you should take it somewhere, and y'all won't do it, and this area, you're fooling with kids' life on this.
I understand. What would you rather see that piece of property zoned to? If we don't go to SF2, what would you want it to be? If you all remember, we had a proposal to rezon it to industrial, to put a plastics plant out there, and nobody wanted that either.
I wasn't there at that time.
So it didn't get rezoned to that, came back and rezoned it to build houses on it, because we felt like the highest and best use was for residential development. This is just a little pocket that got split off because of 412 bypass.
And the little pocket will grow bigger, just like it always has here.
Sorry?
The little pocket will grow bigger, just like it always has in this town.
Well, the little pocket, the area around it is already bigger. It's already SF2.
Any other questions or comments? It's to the commission.
So the way I see it is, that little piece could actually have smaller housing than SF2 if it remains a pud. It possibly could. And they really don't have any access to the amenities on the other side. That's correct. That allow it. So it would make more sense to zone it like the rest of the property. I mean, they don't have access to the clubhouse without having to go all the way around. You can't really say the amenities are there for that little pocket that's on that side. Yeah.
And if they do develop that area, they have to do road improvements at that time, so Grimsley will be improved at the point of where they have.
Have to do their half of the street, the full length of the property. And we have partnered in some cases to get more improvements done because of congestion issues. We haven't, I mean, we don't have anything to look at yet. We don't have a subdivision proposal yet.
So we have potential of larger lots for houses and a potential of road improvements if that happens, so it's a better deal.
The smallest lot size that they can do in SF2 is 70-foot of frontage, 8,000 square feet.
Right.
All for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes. Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to council on the 27th.
Thank you. Again, our 18-05 is tabled. Next section, conditional use. First item, C. 18-05 Petra Hunt-Singer, 3968 Chevrolet Avenue, use unit 28, home occupation in SF2.
Hi, Petra Hunt-Singer, 3968 Chevrolet Avenue. Basically, what I am proposing is a home-based business to sell printing on apparel and textile items online.
Will you have anyone coming to your house?
No.
Okay. Everything you do is delivered?
Yes.
Okay.
I know another question comes up, is supplies that you would have, I mean, is there an unusual amount as far as types of shipments that you would have, or any?
No, not at the time. I mean, obviously, if I grow bigger, then I would move outside of my home to another location, but not at this time.
You ship UPS or FedEx or?
Yes.
US Post Office?
Yes.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
No signage? You won't require a sign in your yard or anything?
No.
Can't have it.
It's strictly online. Yeah.
Yeah, she can't have it, anyway. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, the outstrait parking and loading is acceptable, refuse and service area is acceptable, the utilities are acceptable, there's no screening requirements, they are not allowed to have a sign, the yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape of the size is acceptable, the general compatibility with the adjacent properties would be acceptable with the following conditions. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure or provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure. No outside storage of materials required for the operation of the business, operated only by the resident members of the household, and shall not have any employees, consociers, or any other form of operator or helper, whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential structure. Generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water usage in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity. Will not involve accessory buildings, and stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory use.
Right.
Does create a problem for you?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 27th. Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 27th.
Thank you.
Patsy, just a question on this, I mean, we're seeing more and more of these types of circumstances. Is this something that we should look at as far as a use units and any types of modifications in the future?
Well, we have 10 items that are allowed as a home occupation. We can always look at those lists to see if something needs to be changed on those. It's been a while since we looked at those, so it wouldn't hurt to go back and assess if there's something different. We're in a different environment with a lot of more digital work being done that didn't happen...
I think it is something that we need to probably consider in a work session coming up on here, especially the on, specifically the online business, because I suspect that there's probably a lot that are out of compliance in this whole piece. And instead of having to continue to handle these, which we're happy to do that as far as here as the commission, I think it needs to be probably a different use unit that we need to probably look at.
Now, we do have a use unit for a home office, and if it's strictly done, everything online, they can get a home office without having to communicate.
Yeah, but then you're looking at, yeah, but then there's taxation pieces as far as, I mean, just something to consider as far as that we need to probably put on a work session on here. Okay? Otherwise, we're going to continue to see a lot of these. I mean, I do that really out of the individuals, I mean, this takes a lot of time for them to be able to submit these things, get these approvals, and, I mean, it's a new way of business, and a lot of people do this in a second job or something like that, so...
And we've always tried to maintain the integrity of a residential neighborhood by not opening up businesses that create some kind of a different appearance for that and...
Yeah, totally get that, but this one's a unique situation, and I suspect there's probably more people that do this than we know on that one, so, which is great. Okay, next item, conditional use, 18-06, Roush Coleman Homes, 7601 Bridgegate Avenue, Use Unit 34, model home, marketing sales office presented by Roush Coleman. I'll leave that one for now.
It'll be tabled to the next month's meeting.
Okay. So I'll give that one more opportunity. Roush Coleman Homes, 7601 Bridgegate Avenue, model home, Use Unit 34, presented by Roush I know a question's probably going to come up on here, it's on the agenda, can it be heard as far as anyone that had any comments about it?
You can do that if you want to, but there's not, well, let me ask Sarah.
We're not going to vote on it.
No one here to present the application.
Would you vote on it?
Yeah.
Right. So, did you have a question or comment? If you want to come up to the mic, feel free to, I just wanted to call that out, that we will not vote on this and stuff, so...
Understood. Adam Grubb again, 7367 Belgrove, I'm actually just down the street from this, and it wouldn't even be an issue, except for the fact that they've already moved stuff in. The only thing they haven't done is actually take the garage door down and put up the frontage to add an office door. So, you know, I kind of understand why they skipped out on showing up tonight, because they're already just doing whatever they want, as usual, without actually going through the council, getting approval like they're supposed to.
Shane, can you make a note and check this tomorrow and see if they are operating a model home without a, not a conditional use?
If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, just had to get this on the record on it, so...
Michael McLean, 7314 Belgrove, I live just down the road, and I've got pictures of them conducting a meeting and leaving the residence, if you'd like to see those on my phone.
Is there, I went out there, is there a sign out there? They have a sign, I remember seeing a sign up near York.
I'm after a model home, but it's a Roush Coleman sign.
Yep. And then I was reading into the ordinances as well. Is it required that they have to have a garage door, and they can't have a door in the actual garage door place? Because I, reading into it, says a temporary wall must be constructed, then the garage door has to be on its place. So I'm wanting to try to make sure it blends in with the neighborhood instead of looking awkward and out of place, so...
We'll get community engagement to go out and look at it tomorrow and see what's actually going on. If you want to email me those pictures?
Yes, ma'am.
Send them to me, if you go to the city's website, send them to the planning officer, send them to me directly, either way.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll have them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jerry Hardigan, 3874 Bridgeton, we're on the POA out there at Legendary. Here's the deal, this is the second time in the last couple of months, we came here, and we're Roush Coleman. All right, the disrespect that they show, that these people all come out here, they do whatever they want, whenever they want, I sit in the dark on Bridgeton, okay? That development's 10 years old, I have no lights, yet we want to build developments all over the city. So, how about taking care of the guys that are here or paying the taxes? We have no lights out there, it's dark, it's dangerous, and we have crime, right? Patsy knows. All right, and I've talked to so many people, I don't know who to talk to anymore, right? You want to take, but how about giving us something out there? We're in pitch-black conditions out there, so who do you think's going to pay for that?
We have been back and forth with this with Carroll Electric, this is one of those subdivisions that went into bankruptcy, we don't know if the, if the cables were put in, the power lines were put in there, we're told there's nothing there, it has to be re, you know...
Well, I would have to ask you this, how do you get an occupancy permit for a house? How can everybody just keep building houses and there's no lights? Right? Isn't that part of an occupancy permit?
Well, it's part of getting the final plat approved for the...
Well, who's checking it, right?
I know we've had people out there recently that check.
Are you guys collecting money, right? For permits and stuff like that? So, why in the world am I sitting in the dark out there? Right? Who's going to do it? I mean, is next, do we get the TV and we get, you know? I mean, do we have to play that game? Papers, TV? Have a good night.
Thank you.
This is an issue we've been talking about for several months, trying to get something worked out. And I, it's very frustrating, it really is for everybody, we have not been able to put this together yet.
Hi, Tish Hardigan, 3874 Bridgeton, I just wanted to go back to the model home for a minute. The model home that they chose is on a very busy street and right on a corner, and I would just like to say that they have another house that they have not sold, it's been built for months, and it's in a better location than I would say, it's at Devonshire and Blackburn. And there's actually plenty of room for parking on Blackburn in that block because there's no driveways on that block. So, to me, that makes more sense to have a model home down there than where they're trying to put this one. Because that, that street is the one that they use for the school, and, you know, they're doing all that building down there, I just think it's not a good location, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Matt Klink scales, 4284 Cornwall, sorry, forgot my address. To add on to what she just said, if you have been to Shaw Elementary, you do see that that is a, it's right there, it's on the corner, if you have a picture, you can actually see the turn-in for buses, for the walk, for children to walk across, there's a crosswalk there, not one of the lit-up ones or anything, but it's heavy traffic right there, it's on the corner where it's a blind spot to turn right there for people to see. To add on to what she's saying, it is a little bit of more hazardous for people. Bridgeton in general has a lot of cars on it anyways, it's hard to have two lanes of traffic in general, a lot of people have to stop and go off to the side because of that. To add on to what she's saying, I can see where it's at, the other one that she's recommending, it's in a way more secluded area that does not have as much traffic, and it would, it is a fine home for them to use as well. We don't have a problem with that, just want to follow the procedures. And kind of what Jerry also said about the permits, occupancy permits, I was wanting an inquiry on that, I know that's separate to this, but do they have to review for lights, working lights as they continue to get permits? Is that something that you have to do for that?
Want to address the issue of occupancy permits without streetlights?
There's no connection.
How are you?
Streetlights, as Ms. Patsy already alluded to, as far as the plat and its final lies before it ever goes to, or where we permit individual housing construction, there's no connection between the two at all. Questions?
Which, what he's saying is, we have no teeth because we can't hold up the occupancy permits because it is a requirement of the subdivision of the occupancy permits. We probably need to get with you and the city attorney and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
So again, this will be tabled?
Yes, to next month. We will contact them and see what's going on.
Right. And so, the sign will stay up as far as what you guys posted as far as a public hearing on it, from a notification perspective?
Nobody else gets notified.
Okay.
We don't re-notify if it's just to one month.
Okay. I would, I would say probably if there's a specific spokesperson for the POA or the homeowners association, you might want to contact the office prior to the March meeting to see if this will be on the agenda for that timeframe.
They would have to withdraw it for it not to be on the agenda.
Right.
Otherwise, it'll be on the agenda unless they ask to have it withdrawn.
I just want to help them as far as notification associated with that. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Megan Seeger, so I live 4075 Baltic Street. I actually live in a Roush Coleman home, so I have a lot of experience in dealing with them and how they treat the people that invest in this neighborhood and in these homes. So I'm kind of disappointed that I took time out of my night and drug my three kids out in sleeting weather, and they didn't even have the decency to show up. So I'm concerned with the fact that you guys are just tabling this instead of voting on it, because they had their opportunity to show up, and all these people showed up to voice their opinion, so why is it the protocol to table it instead of voting on it? And they just, they waived their right to have a say in the matter.
Sarah, this becomes a legal question, the applicant is not here to make the request, so...
No, that's exactly, the applicant's not here, and they have to have the opportunity to respond as well. So it has been historically, traditionally, what this commission has done time and time again, to table it one month and to not vote on it unless the applicant is here, and I would advise against voting on this this evening.
And Sarah's our representative from the city attorney's office, by the way.
That's fine. So, what if they don't show up again? Is the protocol going to change? Are they just going to be able to continue to do whatever they want to do out there?
The, you can't table it, but to one time, they would have to resubmit and notify all the adjacent property owners again, and we'll send community engagement out there to stop whatever's going on there now.
Okay.
And write a citation for them if they're operating a model home without a, without a permit.
That's fine. This is off the topic, but also, just right down the street, they had set up that temporary structure that they wanted to use as a construction office that you guys made them move.
Did it not leave yet?
The office is gone, what are you going to make them do about all the gravel they left on that lot? There's like a circle driveway they put in of gravel, and it's still there.
Okay, it was my understanding they were removing that structure and cleaning the lot, so...
The lot has not been cleaned.
Okay. Okay. Shane, there's another one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just to go back on that, this is not the first time that we drug all these people out here. Okay, can we censor these people? I mean, I don't know, what do you, what do you guys do? I mean, this is a Roush Coleman show every month.
I mean, we are required to bring their application and put it on the agenda when they file it with the procedure that they've been...
I understand, okay.
And we put that on the agenda, and we have a procedure we have to go through, I don't know what else we can do.
I'm not from here, I'm from Philadelphia, so back there, when you snooze, you lose, right? So, if they're not here, I think they should vote on it, tough luck.
Just to kind of second Jerry's opinion on it, Adam Grubb, Belgrove. Again, if you go and you schedule a doctor's appointment and you don't show up, the doctor can actually charge you a fee for canceling on an appointment, and this is y'all's time that you get paid for due to taxpayer money, and the taxpayers are sitting right here, I understand that legally, that it can't be voted on, and I'm not trying to push for it to be, but some recourse against people not showing up when they have put something on the docket or notifying you so that it can be properly tabled in advance, I think there should be something that should be in place against when they do this. Because this is consistently happening against you guys and us every single time we come up here.
We need to talk about what, if any, procedures need to be changed to allow that to happen, yeah. Sarah will make a note, we'll talk to the city attorney about what we can do, if there's anything legally we can do to require that to happen.
Fine, penalty, or something, is what he was saying. Yes.
Okay. I understand your frustrations, and believe me, I mean, as a commission, it's frustrating as well, especially on an evening like tonight, when you do have the weather the way it is and so forth. But we've heard your comments, and we will address some of these things as well as far as, you know, procedurally, what are some of the things that we can do different? And I do appreciate you guys bringing that up. But I, we are going to continue to table it based off of currently how things are structured and our legal counsel as far as doing that and that whole piece. But I want you to understand that I have heard, we have heard, and we will look at different ways as far as handling these situations on here, so... But thank you all, I appreciate, I know a lot of you guys that are in the audience did come out for these particular things. This is a difficult area as far as, we've heard legendary subdivision on numerous occasions, and we, trust me, we want to help as far as doing what's right on that. And I did want to call out, one other thing is, is that we do have master land use planning that is coming up within the next couple of months. We do, the planning commission, we meet as far as the first Tuesday of every month for this session, but we also do have work sessions, and what we do have coming up probably, I think probably in the March timeframe, we're going to start to really kind of talk through some of those. The key area that's been focused, and these guys get tired of me talking about it on there, is the northwest corridor of Springdale has got to have some master planning associated with it. We're seeing where there's a lot of interest to really kind of get that developed, so I call that out to you guys, especially because the majority of you live in that area, I do as well, it's an opportunity to be a part of that as far as planning out that area and really being heard and being a part of the process. So I encourage you, we'll continue to make sure that we do post those and make that available, but it is a great opportunity for the entire northwest corridor, and that covers everything from where I live off of the Wagon Wheel, Silent Grove area, all the way over to the 112 area as well on that, so, and 412 North on it, okay? So it's a big swath of area, but it's critically important, especially with what's been happening with J.B. Hunt Development and things of that nature. We're all proud to be living in that area, and we can definitely make a difference in those things there. So I did want to call that out as far as where you guys can be a part of helping us as far as planning some of those things out, so, okay? Appreciate it. So we'll tables, C 18-06, and I'll move to the next item, C 18-07, TJ Auto, Tim and Joanna Rueda?
Rueda.
Rueda, sorry about that. 3360 North Thompson, Use Unit 42, auto sales in C2, presented by Tim Rueda.
Yes, I'd like to ask the chamber for permission to put in a car lot at 3360 North Thompson. My residence is at 400 Linwood in Lowell. My name's Tim Rueda.
Staff comments?
He did submit a site plan, so you can see that he is looking to, I'm assuming all these spaces that are along the front of the property would be spaces to park vehicles for sale.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you have a handicap space that's to the, on the west side of the property with, and that would be parking for your employees?
Yes, correct.
Would you have in mind? Okay. So you're looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 spaces?
Correct.
Roughly? And that you would only have one access then into this property, and it would be from the place on the north because you have parking spaces across that other driveway?
There, I have a, a joint drive as well with motor and lodge. There's three, three.
Which would be on the south side that you could go in from the side, but.
Correct.
That second entrance is there on 71. You, we'll only be using the one that's on the north edge of the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have vehicles parked out there now?
I have some cars stored up there, yes.
Are they for sale?
No.
The ingress and ingress to the property is acceptable, especially if you're going to close down one of the drives. The off-street parking and loading areas where required appear to be acceptable based on the site plan. Refuse and service areas, are you putting it in a dumpster, and will it be screened?
I can and will, yes, please.
Utilities are acceptable. There, there is no screening that's been proposed to the area to the west, which contains a. I got it wrong. A term mobile home park. I'm trying to figure out what to call that, yeah. Yeah, recreational vehicle park too, okay? The signage, I'm assuming you're going to use the sign that's already there?
Existing, yes, ma'am.
Okay, not changing it any. The yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape of the site is acceptable, and you didn't show any proposed landscaping on this side. Would you be agreeable to add some landscaping along the building or maybe some screening in the back to, in the form of landscaping?
Yeah, I was planning on putting in some more concrete, and I, I'm not opposed to putting in some screening if it's needed.
Okay, where are you proposing to put more, more concrete? Because if we grant you this condition of use based on what you have here, you can't expand it without coming back.
Okay, I was on, on the very back, and it's just to make it cleaner. It's not to park cars or anything. I was adding six foot, the length of the concrete slab, over to the north side of the building.
To make it cleaner rather than, can you landscape that area rather than concreting it?
I mean, it's already got.
Once it gets concrete on it, you will drive on it. That's what usually happens.
The, there's already a tree located back there, a big tree. I had the other tree trimmed as well, and there's shrubs all along the fence. You can't really tell from the picture that kind of protect his home and everything that's sitting back there. There's flowers, a flower bed over on one side and, so.
This used to have a car repair place in it before?
Yeah, there was a tire shop, and before that, there was a car lot there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's do the commission. Vote for the vote.
Can we, can we slow down on that?
If I might, Tim, really, nothing to do with you in a, a personal or professional sense, but at some point, I think the planners in our community need to take note of whether there's a need or whether there's not. A friend of mine who's in the business tells me that we have one used car for every three people that live in our community. I, I can't talk about the veracity of that statement, but I believe it to be close to correct. I live on the south side of Springdale. In driving from where I live, by the Outback Restaurant, if you know where that's at.
Sure.
Up to this location, there are 39 used car lots, 39. There are places where we have two, three, four, and five used car lots right next to each other, all of varying quality and quantity. So just from my perspective, at some point, I think we need to talk about, is there a need for the next used car lot? And in my opinion, there is not. By the way, the 40 used car lots is only on 71 up through Thompson. That does not include Sunset, anything going west, anything going east, just on that one strip. I, I personally, very difficult for me to support adding something that, in my opinion, the community doesn't benefit from and that we don't need.
If, if it pleases the chamber, a lot of the cars that I will be selling will be antique cars. There's not really anybody in Northwest Arkansas that really sells the type of vehicles that I will be selling.
Well, the six trucks that are parked out there right now, the pickup trucks that are there right now, would, would probably fit that category, although they're in need of some significant work.
Correct. They're, like I said, they're just being stored there.
Okay, but they're stored there all nose out, all bumper out, all grill out. They sure look like they're for sale to me.
None of them are listed for sale.
I didn't indicate they were listed, but.
Correct.
My guess is they, if somebody were to ask you about that car, my guess is you might say it's for sale.
No, sir. I've, I've actually been up there at the shop cleaning, and I've had three people this week ask me about that 69 short wide bed, and I've told every one of them that it's not for sale.
It's a cool truck.
Yes.
That's all. That's all. Thank you, Kevin.
Debbie?
You know, my concern is that, that location be cleaned up, and I, I would be more in favor of tabling it and have you come back with a landscape plan of following the intent of our today's standards if you're going to put a conditional use in that spot. And that would inclu, you know, include if, to me, if you're going to block off that driveway, putting something to make sure people aren't trying to come in that direction, and, and that would be maybe some type of landscaping and along the sides. And, and having, you know, if, if you're saying you're going to put additional asphalt, I would rather not see, you know, because that whole front of the lot is already all asphalt. I mean, it's.
Right. No, the, the concrete I was talking about was over to the, the far side, and part of it was for the dumpster to actually sit on, because I, I need to put in a screened area with a gate where it can open and close, where it looks clean. And I have been working on, I've got the building painted, all of it except for one part. I've cleaned the property up. I still have to paint the doors and the trim, but I'm, I've come a long way with cleaning the property up.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, is I, I would like, I mean, it's hard for me to say, if you say, I'm going to put a few bushes here, or trees, or better, you know, whatever, without actually, without actually seeing that. And, and the reason I say that is because you have to be very careful to not obscure the sight of people coming in and out, because that, that street, you've got traffic coming in and out that's.
Correct. Are you suggesting the, the shrubbery go on the sides of the building or behind the building? Or I'm, I'm having a hard time following where you're wanting to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, anything in.
Well, the suggestion is, is that Mrs. Haney is, is proposing to you is, is that we're, we're not going to sit up here and design it tonight. It's really more of a, might be better to, what she's asking for, would you be interested in, in tabling this so that you can present a more comprehensive as far as landscape plan with this on here? The intent in here is not to design it up here tonight.
The planning office can work with you on what, what would be allowed under current standards, and there's times where perhaps shrubbery should be in the front, but because there's not enough green space, that may not be wise if it's going to block the line of side of people entering the driveway. They're professionals and can, if you bring a plan to them, can tell you, no, that's not going to work. Could you move this shrub back over here? And then you follow the intent of our.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. If, if, if I need to put in shrubbery, I, I don't have a problem with putting in shrubbery.
So would you be willing to table this till next month and bring a plan to the meeting?
Is there any way that we could just move forward and I go to planning and then draw up the shrubbery and I go ahead and get it put in?
There is, there is a way, and I, and I've seen what you've done out there, and I, and I can see what you're wanting to do. You want a pleasing business because you want to attract people to come in.
Yes, sir. I, I've used it for storage for almost seven years. I haven't, I figured that this would create some business at that end of town, and, you know, I've, I've got a 65 Land Cruiser. I've, I've got some pretty neat cars that you just don't see anymore. I mean, you, you hardly ever run across them, and a lot of them will be sold over the internet. They won't really be sold local because there's not a huge market for it, but I, I, I would like to make it kind of nostalgic and make it look really cool. That's why I was planning on painting the, the doors and, and cleaning it all up. And like I said, I'm not opposed to putting in shrubbery. I just need to know where you guys want it, what kind you want.
Patsy, do we have the option to vote on the project itself with the caveat that he come to the city and work out an acceptable landscape plan to the city?
You can do that, and we, we would have that ready to go when it goes to council, because it has to go to council on the 27th.
Sure. Yeah, I, I would say if you want to vote on it like that, the recommendation would need to be along the lines of recommend conditional use on the condition that.
Landscaping plan acceptable in the city and in the council.
And that would give us until the 27th to have it ready to, to take, to council with some kind of landscaping idea at that point. Does that work?
I'm good with that.
I'm assuming it, it's approved that way.
Right.
So I would call for the vote with the, the additional conditional use, that they try to follow the intent of the landscaping, of our landscaping plan for that type of property.
Okay. Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Conditional use passes 7-1.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll go to council on the 27th, so we need to probably get together later this week or early next week to see if we can get this worked out. You might look at what areas you think you, you would like to landscape and, and come in and talk about those.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you. So Patsy, going forward in the future, here's another item that I want us to add to a work session at some point is, is that on some of these, if they don't have certain things that are submitted, should we even hear it?
Well, the conditional use, there's no requirement that it has to have a landscaping plan. Something we talk about here. So we have to, we, we don't have that set right now, and there is nothing that says they have to have elevations or anything like that. They're just asking for that conditional use, and they met the requirements of what the ordinance says. If we want to add something different, we need to change the procedures and the requirements for conditional use for these kinds of things.
Conditional use is, conditional use as it is most of the time.
Right, yeah.
I do agree.
That are on the checklist is what comes directly out of the ordinance of things that we look at. And so if we need to add something to that, we need to look at making an amendment to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, I do agree with, with the chairman. I think, I think we're going to have some citizens that come that don't necessarily have a lot of experience in that arena, and so I think it's on us to try and help guide and not hold up the process if possible. And I don't think, and we were trying to hold it up tonight, but I think if there's a way that we can put something aside that says, listen, you've reached this point, and now the next step is this, and if you don't have any experience in that, here's some folks that can help you, and here's an option for you to look at.
But the bigger question is, do we want those to still be conditional uses in those , non-classifications? We haven't looked at conditional uses in quite some time either. There may be some, some things we need to change as far as that's concerned, too. Do we want to continue to allow automotive sales to be a conditional use in the C2 zone? That's the bigger question that we get to.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that's why I, I think that we need to revisit conditional uses overall, and, and I'm seeing less and less coming before us, which tells me we're, we're doing a good job of helping inform, but I think this is still tightening the belt a little bit more, and, 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 you know, it's, it's just efforts to continue to make sure that the hard work in some of the areas that we've done and, and the areas that we haven't done things in, that we at least have better standards than what we have today in, in that whole piece.
Now, we've discussed before, changing use regulations. We really don't have any.
Right.
Way to address any of that. Maybe time to revisit that as well. You guys, we may have to have work sessions every week for a while, as many topics as we have going on, too.
I, I know, and, and that's what I appreciate about this, this, this commission over the last couple of years. I feel like we've been cleaning up a lot of messes, quite honestly, for, it's been just sitting out there for years, but the good news is, is that we have a group that's willing to roll up their sleeves and do that. But we've got a little bit more to, to work on.
Yeah, we.
And that's just my request that I have on that one, so, okay? Next section, large-scale developments, L-18-03, Springdale Retail, 1139 West Side Village Street, presented by Crafton Toll. Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Apple. I'm, I work with Crafton Toll, representing Cobblestone Developments.
And do you have any other comments or elaborate more? Okay?
No, sir.
Staff comments?
The land ties need to have an actual description. Need to pin all corners, show the full area of commercial units divided between their usage. The usage must be shown. Landscape must be guaranteed for two years. Minimum distance between driveways on adjoining properties is 50 feet and 150 on a single track. Minimum distance of a drive from the projected curb line at the street intersection is 40 feet for a local or minor collector, 75 for a major collector, and 100 for an arterial street. Show the street right of way. Please include Highway 412. Show the street center line. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The developments must comply with the City of Springdale Commercial Design Standards or variances required. And all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August of 20, of 2007, all utility lines, wires or cables in said development must be underground. Commercial design standards, front, side, and rear elevations are required. Elevations shall include type and color of materials used. Foundation landscaping and any architectural features used to comply with the commercial design standards. All sides of a principal building that faces directly or an abutting public right of way shall feature at least one custom entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights of way, then two entrances are required. Internal pedestrian walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces through the use of low maintenance. Surface materials such as pavers, bricks, or scored concrete. Five-foot wide sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a customer entrance is required. Foundation landscaping is required. Provide an area to accommodate a possible future public transit stop. When public buildings contain additional separate owned stores which occupy less than 50,000 square feet of gross area, the following shall apply. Street level facades of such store shall be transparent between the height of three feet and eight feet above the walkway grade for no less than 60 percent. Windows shall be recessed and should include visual prominent sills, shutters, or others. Such forms of framing, prominent exterior building material should not be smooth-faced. Concrete block, tilt-up concrete panels, or prefabricated steel panels. Facade color shall be low reflectance, subtle, neutral, or earth tone colors. Exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment has to be screened. Utilities and banks of meters shall be screened from public view, and we have to have a unified lighting plan. The engineering comments, the site of disturbance is greater than a half acre, grade and permit application, a SWIP delineating all anticipated disturbed areas, a plan of those areas to, to achieve final stabilization. Which at a minimum must provide 80 percent grass coverage and 100 percent stabilization. A dust control plant with appropriate B and P is designed to control dust, and appropriate fee is shown on the, the application must be submitted to the City of Springdale Stormwater Manager for review prior to receiving final plan approvals. And an easement shall be provided in plans for detention, a minimum of 20-foot wide easement around the 100-year flood pool. Ownership of the detention pond will remain with the land. A copy of the filed easement will need to be sent to us before approval.
Now, you didn't apply for any variances of either the distances between drives or the commercial, commercial design standards yet, have you?
No, ma'am. I don't, I do not believe so.
Okay. So in essence, you're asking, you're going to go back and meet all of these requirements that we just set out here, or you're going to come back with a variance?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
You're either going to meet all the standards that we have listed here, or you're going to come back and ask for a variance?
Yes, ma'am, come back through variance.
No concept of detention or anything?
We have changed the stormwater regulations that we no longer require the concept of detention to be approved. It's automatic, and when you get to see the plans, we know the detention will work, and so we don't have to do concept of detention anymore.
Thank you.
Took us a while, but we got there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's do the commission.
So, so some of these things are, I mean, is it possible for them to fix some of these things, or it's an automatic?
Well, I, I think the distance between the drives is something they're going to have to work on. The elevations, they still have some, some work to do on that. I think, you know, if they want to, they can meet those. Now, you don't have any foundation landscaping at all, correct?
Yeah, actually, we, I, I do have a landscape plan available that we've.
But does it show foundation landscaping next to the building in front? But does it show foundation landscaping next to the building in front?
Not immediately next to the building, it's just beyond the sidewalk. There's a sidewalk up against the building, and then there's landscaping.
So that, that requires, that requires a variance because the commercial design standards say that you've got to have a landscaping strip between the sidewalk and the building, or you have to come back and ask for a variance. So there are some, it depends on what they want to do. They can address some of these, or they can come back and ask for a variance. Now, are you going, you only want one principal entrance that faces onto 412. You're not going to have any that, that faces onto whatever the side street is. I don't even remember the name of it.
No, ma'am, there are no side, no, no side entrances.
Okay, so you've got to have a variance for that one, too.
Okay.
You're having two drive-up window locations on each side of the building?
Yes, ma'am. One is for a bank and the other one is a potential restaurant.
And the parking calculations have been made based on those uses, so that you have enough adequate parking to handle a restaurant and a bank, and then something else in those other? Because once you get this approved, with a parking schedule, you can't come back and say, I want to put a restaurant that's even bigger, or I want two restaurants in here, because you may not have enough parking.
Yes, ma'am. And, and my understanding is, is that the building is going to be divided up into seven separate segments, and it will, yes, ma'am.
You're going to indicate what the uses of all those are limited to, and show that the parking has been calculated, that maybe three of them are going to be offices, one of them's going to be a bank, one of them's going to be a restaurant, what the rest of them are, because that's how you calculate the number of spaces that you need.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because right now, we can't tell because we don't have all the uses indicated on there.
Do we generally vote on something that has this much in question?
Well, it's, it's better than we've had in the past. It isn't quite there yet. We've tried for the last couple of weeks to get some of these things addressed. They didn't file the variance request in time, because it has to be published in the newspaper, so...
It's, my, my opinion is, it's hard to vote on things as far as the large scale, not knowing the number of variances are going to come into play and how much modification that that makes to the actual large scale itself.
Well, what you're voting here is they've got to meet everything that's, that is required because there are no variances.
Well, I understand that.
Is it possible for them to meet everything?
Well, they can have one entrance on the side instead of two driveways. They can have a principal entrance on both sides. They can move the sidewalk, put the landscaping in. They can divide the uses up so that they meet the parking requirements they've provided. It can be done. Is it what they want to do? I don't know.
But aren't we in essence voting on something we already know is going to come back in 30 or 60 days with variances?
Yes.
And those variances could be significant enough that it makes a change as far as the large scale.
So the question comes to you, do you want them to vote on it tonight, or do you want to table it and come back with your variances? Because it is now, we cannot approve a set of plans until you get all of these things addressed.
Yes, ma'am. So if I may ask this question, if, if I table it with the, the anticipation of coming with, applying for these variances, then assuming that all the variances are, are taken care of and, and approved, then, then a, a strong chance of it being, the development being approved at that later planning commission meeting, correct?
It gives us a better perspective as far as what are we looking at and dealing with in that, in that whole piece. I don't know that we can give you a concrete yes or no on that whole piece.
Yes, sir.
But having a better picture of what we're voting on.
Yes, sir.
With the exceptions that you're asking for, would be very beneficial.
Yes, sir.
I mean, for me, I would say I wouldn't start dirt work on something that we may not allow the second entrance, in which case you don't want to start moving dirt if that doesn't end up getting allowed for whatever reason, right?
They're not going to get it.
So you're not, you're not guaranteed any variances or waivers or, so really, us voting on it now means you better plan for everything to not get the waivers, because you can't, there's no guarantee on that.
Yes, ma'am.
They cannot get a grading permit until that large scale is approved and all these conditions have been met or the variances. So if, if you voted on it tonight and said, yes, you approve it with the standards, they're not in a position to get a grading permit when they start moving dirt in 30 days, anyway.
So I think he understands what the option is to come back if it's tabled. What is the option if we vote on tonight and turn it down? Where does that put him? Just so he has both sides to go back and talk to his client.
Just corrects it, brings it back, we put it back on the agenda. And as some people will tell you, what I tell developers in my office, if your engineer does a really good job, it goes really fast. And then addresses all the issues that are outlined in there, then we usually can get through them pretty quickly. And if you address the issues on here with your resubmission, we should be fine.
Okay, so, so my, my general feeling of, of the planning commission, then, is more than likely this would not be, would not be approved short of being able, fixing all of these things as they stand or as noted. In the event my client, it does not work well with my client's interest on the development, to go with the items as listed, then certainly would need the waivers.
I'll, I'll just say this.
Yes, sir.
And I, I'm, this may be where I'm a little bit different, but what is in front of me is a plan, and it has comments from the city that have to be met. So I'm voting on this plan, meeting the stuff that the city has put in. So I don't want you, I mean, certainly I don't want to speak for everybody, but for me, I don't want you to get the impression that I'm going to vote it down. I mean, this is a plan, and I know, I understand the comments about it may come back differently, but then I will, I feel like we should address that. I, I just personally don't have a problem if, if they can get this to meet all the comments of the city. I don't have a problem on voting on it.
Okay, the question is, the items that weren't addressed on here, are they things that you know your client's going to want?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Two driveways, one entrance, no, no foundation landscaping. Do you know that's exactly what they want?
No, ma'am, I cannot say for, for sure.
So I mean, it's a month that, that...
Yeah, you could address it in that month.
If they, if they address it, the, the property owner or the developer says, yeah, I'm good with all that, and you can move forward and save a month. Or they come back and get variances and we vote on it then. But I, I just don't have a problem on voting as is, you know?
No, I mean, I, I agree with you. I just want him to be aware that there's no guarantee that any of those waivers will pass. So if we pass it as is, you've got to fix all those things, which may mean one entrance, not two lands, foundation landscaping. You'll have to add all the things that are in that.
Yes, ma'am. And so my understanding of that is that if you vote on it as is, then there are, there is no opportunity for waivers if, for whatever reason, we can't make something work.
No, you can come back and ask for variances next month if you want to.
Oh, okay.
If you find out that you can't meet, or your client doesn't want to do that, then you can come back for a variance at that, at that time. What VV is telling you is, there's no guarantee you're going to get them when you come back.
Yes, ma'am.
But you have the right to come back and ask for them.
Yes, ma'am. And, and we certainly will address those items quickly so that we can get a sense of how the, the planning commission will view those.
If this is approved tonight, I would suggest you get with your client as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
And then set up a meeting with staff, and let's go over and figure out what we can and what needs to be variance, because the deadline for submission of variances is next Wednesday at noon.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And my, my only other comment on, and I understand Peyton as far as where you're at with that piece on it, but where this makes it a little difficult for me is that the way this is designed is for a mixed-use type of facility as far as restaurants and office space and things like that, that, to what Patsy was alluding to, as far as how the parking is, is done. I mean, there could be, based on tenants that want to occupy this, you know, and I don't know if there's anything planned at this point, if it's really more spec. That's concerns for me on that, as far as the number of variances that may come in front of this. I'm just looking at, I, I hear you as far as that, yes, it's a plan, but it's a plan that could drastically change as well.
They all could, right? I mean, they all could.
Well, here's the, we've got a building that's almost similar to this off of Elm Springs Road that has not had an occupant in, in a year. That was designed almost the same way in that whole piece. So that's the other thing that I'm kind of looking at is, is that you may have another vacant building in, in that whole piece. So those are things that I would like to see more as far as what are we truly looking at for the overall large scale. Again, that's my opinion as well, but that's, that's why I have the comments that I do as far as, I'm happy to look at a large scale, but I really want to see as far as what's really in front of me of the, the types of variances and so forth that's, that's in place on it. Okay?
Okay.
But it's totally up to you. I mean, we can, we can table this, we can vote on it. It's really what do you want to go back to your client with as far as the outcomes?
Yes, sir. But it's, so in, in either case, whether it's tabled and, and voted on next time with the variances between here and there, variances may or may not happen, more than likely will happen between here and there. So I think, I think we're, we're kind of at a standstill for the next month, it sounds like to me, regardless. Would that be correct?
This, it's your decision as far as how you want us to move forward with this. I mean, we can table it if you want, we can vote on it. But we're voting on it without any variances and assuming that you're going to meet all of these standards.
It sounds like it'd be a wise choice to table it and, and ensure that we've, that we've met our clients' needs in looking at the potential variances in, in the event that some things may be more favorable to potential tenants than others.
Okay.
And of course, I apologize.
No, go, go ahead.
Yes, sir. And of course, those, the items that are absolutely necess, necessary by code, we certainly will address those.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest, again, that you get with your client pretty quickly, because the deadline for variances is next Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay, so this is going to be tabled until the March planning commission meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next section, Board of Adjustments, B-18-04. And I'm going to probably pronounce this wrong down here. Evony and Jose Urbina, 3531 Reynolds Avenue, reduction of rear setback from 20 foot to 12 foot, presented by Evony and Jose Urbina. Did I mess it up?
Uh, no.
Okay.
How you doing? You probably need to pull that mic down just a little bit. There we go.
Thank you. How you doing?
I'm here representing both of my friends. They're trying to build a porch.
Okay, you're rep, are they here?
Uh, no, they had an emergency.
Okay, we have representation. Okay, we're good. Go ahead.
Really no.
Okay, let, let's start with the one at 3531 Reynolds. And that's the one where it's already been constructed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, were there any permits, or has there been any inspections on this one down?
Really quick history. We actually had a complaint about some construction going on in the subdivision, and we found several of these structures, multiple. This one had been built without a permit. They have obtained a permit now. We've done no inspections pending tonight's outcome.
So this would put the structure within eight foot of the back property lot, as opposed to the 20 foot that it's normally required. These lots are pretty well-built where the house is taking up most of the lot. There's not a lot of yard space. And this, this porch putting in there takes up most of the yard space that's left.
Okay. Any other comments?
I don't have any, no.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, the, the house, the houses on the lots were built at capacity, and you're losing all the green space on those lots and potentially having roof line, especially if one is allowed, then you're looking at, they could put that on every single house in the neighborhood. I think that changes the basis of...
Ask if Dwayne has any issues from the fire department on these on the back. I didn't forget you. I would forget you.
Well, it's a general comment, we don't support rear-side setbacks.
Variances.
Variances.
Is this building already built, or is it under construction?
This one's already built. It's completely, right, Mike?
Yes, can play his set.
That pad underneath the structure, underneath the cover, that had part of the original house, did they build the patio pad when the house was built?
It was part of the house already.
Because then the pads within a...
And it's a little bit different with the, with the pad there. I mean, that's not as much, I mean, the fire department's not opposed to a concrete pad. It's when you get the roof structure and all that, that you have that potential for fire nature, right?
But you're, what I'm looking at is like, in the future, like, like VV said, was every one of these houses are built that close to the setback. So you really don't, when you buy a house back there, you should know that you cannot, can we not get the construction developers to, they're selling these places to say, hey, this is part of it, you cannot...
Well, they're told that it has a rear setback of 20 feet. Now, whether they pass that on or not, I don't know.
It's changed hands a few times.
True. But you still have to understand that's part of, part of the way it is. It's like, I didn't know I was driving five miles over the speed limit because I didn't see a speed limit sign, and I don't get anywhere.
You know, the hard part for this commission is that nobody wants to make somebody tear something down that they've invested time and money in. But the flip side of that coin is, to, to Ms. Haney's point, are you going to be okay with this happening 88 more times or whatever the number of homes is in this entire subdivision? And I don't think we would.
And I have another question on, if this was a retractable awning, would that be allowed?
Mike, I don't think it's a permanent structure if it's a retractable awning, so it should...
It would be immaterial just at that point. It wouldn't be governed.
Yeah, because it's not a permanent structure.
Okay, even though it's attached to the house? Okay. I just, I just want to have that clarification on that. I mean, that's an option.
That would be, that would be something that they could put up.
Right.
Or a picnic table with an umbrella.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's other options to give shade to areas that you can't build.
I mean, seeing the pictures and what's there, a grill that is a fire hazard right there, I mean, that gets into exactly why they don't allow these set, rear setbacks like this, so. I would assume in that whole piece. Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton.
Covert.
No.
Haney.
No.
Parker.
No.
Parsley.
No.
Panado.
No.
Powell.
No.
Tyler.
No.
The adjustment fails to pass eight zero.
You have the right to appeal. You have to appeal through a circuit court. It doesn't go to city council. You will have 30 days in which to file that appeal. If it's not, file for appeal, the structure needs to come down.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, go ahead.
But you're doing the next one, too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that was...
Yeah.
3679.
Yeah, B-18-05, Benita Lul and Ricardo Lumana, 3679 Bueno Avenue, reduction of rear setback from 20 feet to 12 feet, presented by Joanna Perez.
But it hasn't been constructed, right?
Mm-hmm.
This one has been, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Has not been.
Has not been constructed.
No, they haven't done a detail.
Has not started on this one.
Okay.
So technically, it has two sides and two fronts, so...
But still the same. Don't recommend a side, a side and rear setbacks on it, okay? Okay. Any questions from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert.
No.
Haney.
No.
Parker.
No.
Parsley.
No.
Panado.
No.
Powell.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Compton.
This adjustment fails to pass eight zero.
Again, your appeal is only through the circuit court, and in this case, you don't have anything to remove, but appeal within 30 days.
Okay.
But you might also let them know, I mean, that's why I asked the question earlier, as far as a retractable awning, that is an option for them.
Okay. I'll wait to know. Right. Thank you.
All right, so next item, request by Archer Learning Center to install a temporary outdoor classroom on the northwest corner of Meadow and Water Streets, presented by Patsy Christie.
This is kind of a unique situation. We have members from Height Jackson and probably from the Archer Learning Center to talk about this location. This is in our Form-based code. We really don't have a provision to, to allow a temporary structure like this to go in, but we don't have a way to keep it from coming in. So we're kind of here to talk about what they're, what they want to do. And you guys have somebody who wants to talk about what we're doing and the materials and stuff. Do y'all have a spokesman back there in that whole line?
Yeah.
All right. Aaron, do you have pictures that you can put up there that were in the packet? No? Okay. Now, you got the pictures. You have the renderings that got sent out, okay?
You got them? My name's Larry Perkins. I'm a partner with Height Jackson Architects. Through personal connections, we, and Dr. Davis, who's here tonight with Archer Learning Center, we took on a mentoring program with some of our young men, and to mentor the students at the Archer Learning Center. And part of that process is to do some construction projects together. We built a little food bank, which has been very successful. And the second project, which is a grant that the Archer Center got, is to build a stage. And this is at the southeast corner of Meadow and Water Streets. And we have gotten milestone construction involved. And all of this has donated time and materials in addition to what the school has for grants. The idea is for the construction workers, the young architects, and the students to work together to build something. And it is a stage that will be used for all kinds of events for the students, from, everything from classrooms to music to potentially films. And it is also... And it is also designed to be portable and removed. I'm going to let Jorge Andrade kind of walk you through the project.
Good evening. We have the... We designed it with the knowledge that it's going to be temporary. It's basic materials, but they've been well-articulated to not look like a typical shed. Wood structure, metal roof. The samples of the material should be on the packet. And we were... And the school will be... Has acknowledged that the pavilion's going to be open for the public when not in use, and they will be in charge of any landscape maintenance. Any other questions you might have?
Now, you did put a ramp on the side so that the stage itself is handicapped accessible, correct?
Yes, it's accessible for the...
Then the other question is, is it designed to handle the wind load of the area? I mean, you'll have to get a billing permit, I'm assuming, and all that stuff.
Yes, we have contacted our structural engineer, and we have to submit additional drawings indicating all those loads. We can do so.
We talked about those kind of things.
Great.
And it will face to the east?
It'll be facing to the east, correct.
So the church is on the back side. There are some community gardens that the Learning Center takes care of on that same piece of property to the north of this.
Yes, to the north.
And it will be open to the public to use on weekends or after school, and the school district is still responsible for the maintenance and cleanup of the area, correct?
Correct.
They know it's temporary because the master plan shows this becoming a different use as we move forward. And so they understand that it's temporary.
Who's the property owner?
Greendale School District.
And who will carry the liability insurance on anyone who gets hurt on this?
It'll have to go through the school district.
Okay. They're willing to accept that? They're going to carry that?
Yes. My name's Kobe Davis. I work as assistant principal at Archer. And so I was meeting with Dr. Cleveland just to make sure that we had all of those things taken care of. And yes, it would be under our liability since it is our property and just like if they were anywhere else on school property. Now, outside of school hours, it'd be treated differently, but still, we would be responsible for taking care of that property.
They already have events on that lot during the summer. The Downtown Alliance has had...
Yeah, and they're not planning any events on that this year. They're not planning to use it this year. We went through all the liability issues, all those kind of questions. This has been kind of a tough one to get together.
What does temporary mean? Because if it's built to be temporary, how long is temporary?
Well, we haven't discussed the timeframe yet.
That... To me, that would be the only thing. Because normally, if it's a temporary thing, we just review it a year from now or, you know, something like that.
But do y'all have some... I mean, we don't have... Well, let me back up and say. The Downtown Alliance got a design excellence grant from the Walton Family Foundation to design the Luther Park, Luther George Park renovation project. So that'll take at least a year. So we're probably talking about two years before we get to construction. So I don't see anything changing for at least a couple of years, assuming that everything goes well and then we have to have a funding source for... But when the bond issue passes, there is a possibility of funding there too, so. A couple of years is what we've been talking about. Tentatively, we don't really have a timeframe because we don't know exactly when we're going to be using this piece of land. Mind, do you have an issue with...
I was just going to see what the definition of temporary was. In our books, it's 180 days.
We're talking more than 180 days. Yeah.
Okay. Any other staff comments or... Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission? Just be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Okay. Before you call for the vote, are we talking about a temporary permit for a period of two years from today? Or and then we review it again if we're not ready to do something different? We need to set some timeframe so we know... They know the timeframe, and we know the timeframe when you come back. Is that okay?
Two years from today.
Two years from today, does that work? Or say two years from the first of February?
Yes.
Instead of it being the sixth. Okay. Is that okay with you guys? A two-year time period. If we aren't doing anything different, you would have to come back and have it renewed after the two-year time period.
Can I just ask a question? Does that mean that it's possible with that two-year time period, if we still occupy the lot, we might have to tear the structure down?
You'd have to move it, assuming we would be doing something else with the property for the park development in that two-year time period. If we're not, you still have to come back and get it renewed so that it gets extended to a longer period of time. It gives us time to see how it operates and those kind of things in that regard.
Well, I just... What I want to understand is, so am I to assume that if we still own the property and are still using it for school purposes, then we could just reapply and probably still have use of that space?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Haney.
Ricky's.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Pass the 7-1.
Okay. So you guys need to get with the building inspector to make sure that we have everything taken care of that we need to.
Thank you. Director's report.
Okay. Y'all talked at the last work session about the possibility of a comp plan extended work retreat. Did we come up with some times? What is the... We have some consensus on when we want to do that, starting maybe at 1:00 and going to 7 or 8 that day and inviting several speakers to come in to talk to us about different scenarios of the city. Do we have... Do we want to look at the third Tuesday of March, which would be... My iPad just died.
That's during spring break.
I was going to say, keep it on spring break. It'll be... Yeah.
Spring break's probably not a good idea.
Unless the meeting's in Daytona. And then, you know, we may be able to work it out.
Well, could we do it the... Like the 29th? Because council meeting will be on the 27th. We could do it on the Monday night, the 26th.
Of February?
Of March.
Yeah.
March 26th, starting it. Or, you know, Mondays are really hard times to show up at 1:00 and stay for eight hours. Could we do it on Thursday, the 29th or Friday, the 30th? Would you rather do it on a Friday afternoon or a Thursday afternoon? Do you want us to send out a...
Let's just send out a note. Let's have those tentative dates on that.
Let everybody vote on what works. Okay. So we'll put down March the 26th, March the 29th. We would start at 1:00 p.m. and go to probably 7:30, 8:00 o'clock. Okay? Then the work session for the February work session, which is February the 20th, we can, you know, go over the schedule, make sure we know then, and talk about who all we want to have at that meeting, and then start discussion of... Continue what you all discussed last time and begin working on some of these other items that we've talked about tonight. Does that work?
Yep.
One thing, one idea or suggestion I was just thinking about and I could bounce it off here was that, you know, there's so much that goes into just the northern, the northwest quadrant. So my thought was if there was an opportunity for you or Aaron or the planning department, maybe draft an idea of maybe best... Because you're the professionals, best practices on... You say, "If I was going to kind of do the zoning ideally in the northwest quadrant, kind of this is what I'd do," and then throw it to us, and then we get to...
Yeah. We'll bring you with some ideas. I mean, after we talk to the various, like the school district and the water department and some of those agencies, so we know what their plans are for extending of infrastructure and school locations and that, then we can start putting that stuff together because that drives a lot of how development occurs too. So we can try to put all that stuff together. We probably won't get it all done in that one meeting. We will probably have to have another longer session in April and maybe even May to get... Comp plans are a little bit difficult. Yeah. And we have a lot of things going on. There's a lot of things going on, so.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Anyone else have anything? All right. Appreciate everybody that stayed this evening. Safe travels home. Meeting adjourned.